Call the meeting. Go ahead, roll call please, Michelle.
Avon.
Here.
Caladonia.
Here.
Canisius.
Here.
Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima.
Here.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Here.
North Dantville.
Here.
Nunde.
Here.
Ashen.
Here.
Portage.
Here.
Sparta.
Here.
Springwater.
Here.
West Sparta.
Here.
York.
Here.
Ian, if you will, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its power.
We have the meeting minutes of our last regular meeting, September 22nd. Does anybody have any changes or any amendments for us to consider? Hearing none, I look for a motion in the second, please.
Move, Schuster.
Motion in the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. We do have a public hearing this afternoon. I would ask Bill Ford to please come up and present public hearing information.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today's public hearing is the annual public hearing held to hear objections on the number of units assigned to each parcel in the county water and sewer districts. This special assessment role is developed by the Real Property Tax Services Office. The units are assigned based on rules and regulations this board adopted many years ago on what designates a unit. A house is one unit. A house with an apartment is two units. If there are any objections brought at any time during the year, they will be reviewed at that time. Special assessment pays for the construction of water and sewer systems. Special assessment roles show how many units you will be charged for water and/or sewer on your property tax bill for the 2022 tax roll. In other words, this is not a public hearing on rate, just the unit these properties assign. Single-family home is charged one improved unit. Multiple units come into play when there are apartments, double homes, et cetera. This is not a new charge. This is an annual public hearing. If you receive more than one notice, it is either because you own multiple tax parcels or have both public water and public sewer. A separate public hearing where the rate per unit will be held as part of the county's annual budget process.
Thank you, Bill. Where is public hearing open? I'll ask if there's anyone who wishes to come up and address the board as far as the units that are being assessed or assigned. Please come forward to the podium and sign in if anyone cares to bring their objections forward. Hearing none, we'll leave the public hearing open until the close of the meeting. We'll ask a question again if anyone cares to present before the board of supervisors. We do have some communications, please, Michelle.
Sure. I'll skip over the first one, as that was yesterday. But receipt of summons and complaint in the matter of Michael Chase versus Livingston County et al. And the bicentennial tree pickup is today at 2:45 PM in the government center rear area of the upper parking lot.
Thank you, Michelle. We have an abstract of claims.
Mr. Pangrazio approving abstract of claims 10A, October 13th, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, I move this abstract of claims and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. Is there any questions or discussion on this abstract of claims? Hearing none on the roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1580, absent 429, adopted.
Next, we have a lot privileges of the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I request privilege of the floor for Governor Bump, Executive Director, Genesee Valley Council on the Arts.
Hello, good afternoon. Thank you so much for having me in today. Again, I'm Deb Bump. I'm the Executive Director of the GBCA. And I was originally scheduled to speak to your group on March 23rd of 2020, I think the date was, which obviously didn't happen. And I remember when I scheduled that meeting, I was very optimistic for the year and all the great things we had planned, which obviously didn't happen. We were able to pivot to a lot of online programming for the year. But I just wanted to take a few minutes to give you an update of what we've been doing over at the Arts Council since we've kind of reopened again. We started back with live exhibits in September of 2020, and we've had a really good year. So I just wanted to kind of update and give you some highlights on what we've been doing. We had our annual member show back in May of 2021. And again, earlier this year, we weren't really sure how exhibits in person would go, but we had over 30 local artists participate, which was a great number. We've been having our receptions outdoors until probably now. I think we might have to cut down on that with the weather and getting dark. But it was great to have so many people back into the gallery and participate in these shows like that. We gave away the Paula Henry Award in conjunction with the Genesee Valley Citizens for Peace. And it was just a really great show and just, again, so great to see people back out and in the galleries and enjoying the artwork and participating in the show. The next, we did have our Genesee Valley Fair and Wear Festival this year, which is usually held at Letchworth each June, but with the restrictions still in place at the park, we asked and were given permission to have it up on Murray Hill. And it was great. It was a beautiful location to have our event up there. The vendors really enjoyed it. We had six bands, yeah, over 25 vendors over the course of two days in July. And I just want to give a huge thank you to the county employees on the hill up there to help that event happen. You know, Bill Mann's here today, Dan Keenan up there. They were really great in helping us get that event going, and it was a very successful festival. We were so happy to be able to bring that back to Livingston County, and hopefully we can do that again next year. When I was looking at the schedule for this year back in January, I wasn't quite sure how the year was going to look. So we thought it might be a good idea to collaborate with some other organizations in Livingston County. The first one I reached out to was Livingston County Economic Development, as they had their Inspirations Trail project slated for May of 2020, which was the public installation of artwork through all the downtown villages, which of course probably didn't get the attention it deserved in May of 2020. So we decided to collect all the boards that were created, which I think, Bill might know the exact number, but it was probably close to 100 boards that we exhibited in our galleries, bringing that whole exhibit, that whole Inspirations Trail into one place. So that was a really great exhibit, and we were happy to work with them to make that happen and really give it the attention it deserved. And then just last month, we had our historical exhibit with the Historian's Office to commemorate the bicentennial. And that was, again, a great collaboration, working with our neighbors right next door on the hill to celebrate this bicentennial year. And I think we had historical societies, I think we had eight or nine participate, which was great to really have all that work in one place on view. So since those collaborations really worked well, I hope to extend some more of those in the future. A new program we had this summer was a kids' arts camp, and this was great. It went so well. We anticipated to have about 12 to 14 kids sign up, and we had 25. It was a three-day program at the end of August, and we had everything from traditional arts education, you know, working with color wheels and the color spectrum, to Turkish paper marbling. We had a Mexican artist come in and teach the kids some Mexican artwork and dances. And you can see they're having a great time doing that. So that is definitely something we'd like to continue going forward. We heard great feedback from the parents and the kids about what a great program it was. So we were thrilled to be able to do that for the kids around. And again, we'll definitely continue that to move forward. Just looking ahead to what we have on the horizon, our annual Artful Holidays, I think this is the 33rd year we'll be having that event in our galleries. So we usually host about 30 local artisans and vendors that come in, and we set up their displays. And last year, again, we had this in person in our galleries, and again, we weren't really sure how it would go. It was an extremely successful year. I think people were anxious to get out and shop for the holidays, and we're anticipating that again this year. So we're really looking forward to that event, which will begin on December 4th. And then we're always kind of brainstorming, looking for ways to really market and get the word out about our unique WPA collection. A few things happened this year. We did have an article that was published by an organization called The Living New Deal. They're out of Berkeley, California. So it was an article about our collection, the history of it, how we acquired it through the tuberculosis hospital, the whole history of the collection. So that was really good national exposure for the collection to get that out there. So we're looking to get more of those things happening, really expand the word, to really drive tourism in the region and to our galleries, because it is such a unique collection. So we want to make sure people are aware of it. We have also recently hired a new part-time gallery coordinator, who he's not only in charge of helping get artists into the galleries and hang exhibits, but he's also in charge of helping to market that WPA collection. Again, getting the word out just so people will come up to the hill and check it out and visit us at GBCA. So lastly, I just want to say thank you so much. Your support and generosity from the Board of Supervisors is amazing. And in speaking with a lot of other art councils throughout the state during this past year, I realize how very fortunate we are to have the support of the county. So thank you so much for that. And your budget for next year, if there's any opportunity for increase, we will be happy to push on those initiatives that we have, make our part-time gallery person a full-time. I know it's tough, but we really do appreciate your support so much. It means so much to us, and we're so lucky to have it. So we're looking forward to a great end of 2021 and more events in 2022. So stop up and visit us, come shop for Artful Holidays, and thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we have several resolutions on the.
Proclaiming the month of October 2021 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Livingston County. Proclaiming October 3rd through the 9th, 2021, as Mental Illness Awareness Week in Livingston County. Proclaiming October 24th through the 30th, 2021, as National Lead Poisoning Prevention Week in Livingston County. Proclaiming the month of November as Adoption Awareness Month in Livingston County. Supporting Operation Green Light for active military service members in transition to civilian life veteran status. Designating Livingston County Tourism, Inc. as the 2022 Official Tourism Promotion Agency. Providing for public hearing for Agricultural District Number Two and referring it to the Livingston County Agricultural and Farmland Protection Board. Providing for public hearing on petitions to join existing agricultural districts and referring them to the Livingston County Agricultural and Farmland Protection Board. Amending Livingston County Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA Transition Plan. Declaring Surplus Property Central Services and Sheriff's Office.
I'll ask at this time if there's, is there any discussion on any of these resolutions? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion in a second to move these to a vote.
Second, Davis.
Do we have a motion in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's carry the vote on these, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1580, absent 429, adopted.
We also have several resolutions this afternoon.
Mrs. Walker, authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation: Medcor Staffing, Inc., Workfit Medical LLC, Worldwide Travel Staffing Limited, SBA Staffing Solutions, Inc., Doing Businesses at Work Personnel, and Sight Right, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none on the roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1580, absent 429, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Department of Health Coordinated Care Services, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions or concerns on this contract? Hearing none on the roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1580, absent 429, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant award contract for the Livingston County Department of Health, New York State Department of Health.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions or concerns on this resolution? Hearing none on the roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1580, absent 429, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Department of Social Services, Chances and Changes, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions on this resolution? Hearing none on the roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1580, absent 429, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Office for the Aging: Livingston Healthcare Systems, Inc., Nicholas Noes Memorial Hospital, there are two, and Willow Creek Venue.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions or concerns on these contracts? Hearing none on the roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1580, absent 429, adopted. Mr. Knapp, authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant award contracts for the Livingston County Board of Elections, New York State Board of Elections, there are two.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none on the roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1580, absent 429, adopted. Awarding bid for the exterior stairway project at Ward Court Street, Geneseo, New York, Holly Construction LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none on the roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1580, absent 429, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County District Attorney's Office, New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none on the roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1580, absent 429, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for Livingston County, Livingston County Tourism, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any question or discussion on this contract? Hearing none on the roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Caladonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1580, absent 429, adopted. Authorizing a professional services contract for the engineering, design, right-of-way incidental, and construction support phases of a federal state aid bridge rehabilitation replacement project, New York State PIN 4LV004, Stones Falls Road, over Mill Creek, BIN 3316960, Town of North Dantville, Copley Design Group.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any questions or concerns on this resolution? Hearing none on the roll, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Aye.
Aye.
Livonia?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
Aye.
North Danville?
Aye.
Nunde?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Eyes 1580, absent 429, adopted. Authorizing the implementation and supplemental agreement number three with New York State Department of Transportation for preliminary engineering design right-of-way incidentals and right-of-way acquisition, construction and construction inspection phases and funding in the first instance, 100% of the federal aid and state merchandising program aid eligible costs of a transportation federal aid project and appropriating funds therefore. Dow Road Bridge, BIN 3316270. Replacement, Town of York, PIN 4LV0.03.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, I will please Michelle.
Evan?
Aye.
Caladonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Groveland?
Lester?
Lima?
Aye.
Livonia?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
Aye.
North Danville?
Aye.
Nunde?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Eyes 1580, absent 429, adopted.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any questions or discussion on this contract?
Evan?
Aye.
Caladonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Groveland?
Lester?
Lima?
Aye.
Livonia?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
Aye.
North Danville?
Aye.
Nunde?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Eyes 1580, absent 429, adopted. Authorizing a professional services contract for mobility management services for various county human service departments, ARPO.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, I will please Michelle.
Evan?
Aye.
Caladonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Groveland?
Lester?
Lima?
Aye.
Livonia?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
Aye.
North Danville?
Aye.
Nunde?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Eyes 1580, absent 429, adopted. Authorizing the implementation and supplemental agreement number three with New York State Department of Transportation for preliminary engineering design right-of-way incidentals and right-of-way acquisition, construction and construction inspection phases and funding in the first instance, 100% of the federal aid and state merchandising program aid eligible costs of a transportation federal aid project and appropriating funds therefore. Dow Road Bridge, BIN 3316270. Replacement, Town of York, PIN 4LV0.03.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, I will please Michelle.
Evan?
Aye.
Caladonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Groveland?
Lester?
Lima?
Aye.
Livonia?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
Aye.
North Danville?
Aye.
Nunde?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Eyes 1580, absent 429, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Office for the Aging: Livingston Healthcare Systems, Inc., Nicholas Noes Memorial Hospital, there are two, and Willow Creek Venue.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions or concerns on this contract? Hearing none, I will please Michelle.
Evan?
Aye.
Caladonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Groveland?
Lester?
Lima?
Aye.
Livonia?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
Aye.
North Danville?
Aye.
Nunde?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
York?